One, and this workshop session is in order. And let me read something here that I'll also read at the six o'clock meeting. The upward trending local COVID-19 numbers coming from Peterson Regional Medical Center played a major factor in influencing the decision to return to social distancing measures at city council meetings. The decision was made late last week after the hospital reported a high number of COVID-related hospitalizations. And the growing numbers of new COVID cases over the weekend only reaffirm that this move is in the best health interests of the public, the city council, and the staff. Since last Friday, Peterson has reported 55 new coronavirus cases with 26 people hospitalized on Monday. Among these hospitalizations, eight were in the intensive care and six of those were on ventilators. Because of this trend, we are committed to doing all we can to keeping our citizens safe while at City Hall and helping the hospital flatten the curve on this recent COVID surge. Standard safety protocols will be observed by city council, city staff, and citizens, visitors attending the city council meetings. And while wearing a mask at council meetings is voluntary, we highly encourage it as a preventative health measure. We will observe six-foot distance seating with visitor seating being designated. Visitor overflow will be at the City Hall lobby or outside City Hall. Citizens are encouraged to view and hear city council meetings on Spectrum Channel Two or by live streaming via the city's website, www.curbaletx.gov. City council meetings are also recorded and the recordings posted on the city's website and Facebook pages. Now, let's move to our workshop. First, public comments?
Yes, sir. We do have one signed up, Bruce Stricki.
Okay.
Actually, I don't think my comments are necessary at this time, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. Information and discussion on the planning and development of public safety facility.
Mayor and council, tonight, we've got several of your public safety officials, including Fire Administration, Turbo Fire Department, and Municipal Court today, in addition to our Finance Department, to talk to you about the ongoing public safety need and the deficiencies in the current operational facilities that they have and the operational challenges that that poses. And so, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Chief McCall up to the podium to begin this presentation for you tonight.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to go over some of the needs in regards to our facilities. We'll start with the Police Department and Fire Department. I'm sorry, this is incorrect PowerPoint. If we could switch over to Police PowerPoint. We'll start with the Police Department and Municipal Courts and some of the needs there. Incidentally, that picture of the front of the Police Department is interesting because we were just contacted recently by HBO in regards to they want to utilize the facade of our department because it's very indicative of a building from the late 1970s, which they want to set their story. From the exterior of the department working in, actually, our department was constructed in 1973 for the Kerrville Bus Company. It was the history of that. There's a picture there on the side of the plans that I actually had in my office from this building that were dated October of 1973. It was converted from that bus depot to the Police Department and Municipal Court facility in 1994. It remained in that capacity up until 2007 when Municipal Court moved out of our facility, what is currently our facility, into the facility there currently housed at. We have occupied that building for 27 of the 46 years that it's been in existence. Obviously, that building was never intended to be a public safety facility and was retrofitted to try to meet our needs. This facility has really given us all, as we'll see through this presentation, the status of where it's at. But first, I really want to talk with you about Municipal Court, where it's currently located. As I mentioned, it moved into its current location in 2007. And the building it's currently in was truly intended to be a temporary move, a temporary housing solution for the Municipal Court until another could be located. I'm told that was initially meant to be about a five-year plan to try to find them someplace to get to, and we're in 14 years in that location now. The current location is not really ideal for easy public access as there's no real main, the real fair there leading to the building. It has structural issues seen throughout the building as well as security concerns for the judges and occupants of the building. The Municipal Court shows structural issues in the form of cracking to the foundation. These cracks run through the lobby area of the building and have started to affect the walls of the building as they start cracking near doorways and near the clerk station. As a result of the settling of the foundation, they also see issues with doors being able to open and close as they're sticking and creating issues for them in that sense. They also have plumbing issues that they experience fairly regularly within the building that has to be attended to. The layout of the Municipal Court is not really in a form that's business-friendly for a court in that our security leading into the courtroom is actually inside the doors that are the courtroom. You literally enter the courtroom before you ever move through the metal detectors for the facility. That setup is not ideal, obviously, for the security of the building and also creates distractions in the court as people move in and out of the court as it has an audible sound that goes off as people move through it. The location of the employee restrooms, you must actually walk through the courtroom to access those restrooms. So, employees there have to be cognizant of when court's in session and how they're moving through that room. There's also a small kitchenette area that is also accessed through the courtroom, so breaks and things like that, they have to move actually through the courtroom to get to the kitchenette. The conference room in the building serves multiple purposes, from storage to deliberation for juries and also serves as their break room. So, as juries are in deliberation, they're out of break room and have to find other locations to do that. As you can see, the layout is really impractical for running smooth day-to-day operations for the court. The Municipal Court has inadequacies in regards to the clerk and storage area as the clerk's area is overcrowded work area. The clerk stations are separated by partitions, making it hard to hear when persons are being helped at the window, interrupting service from the back of the, or from the opposite side of those partitions, as well as insufficient space for maintaining open case files. Storage is an issue throughout the building and a lack of space for mandatory record retention for closed case files. As you can see in this photo, there are boxes of paperwork for storage stacked up against walls as they're required to be maintained. And there are no storage area to maintain their cleaning supplies. I think you've seen that picture of the vacuum cleaners, trash cans are left out in the open because there's no location to locate those. Moving to the Kerrville Police Department facility, I'll talk about some of the existing conditions for our building. We're seeing infrastructure failures and deficiencies throughout the building. We have poor roof integrity and leaks every time it rains. Every time we see a moisture event, we see drainage into the building. We're getting damaged with each moisture event. We're sustaining damage internal to the building. Windows and walls also leak and are damaged due to the moisture. And we've had numerous sewage leaks through the pass into the facility as well as exterior and out onto vehicles outside the facility as it cascaded down from the second floor. We've had that also occur within our patrol squad room where we have raw sewage running down the walls of our patrol room, creating, obviously, an unhealthy environment for our employees. The top picture is difficult to see, but that is leakage into the ceiling on the second floor. That is one of about 18 leaks that we currently have. We replaced all of our ceiling tile prior to our July 7th open house, and in the last month, we've had at least 18 leaks reoccur where we're getting that damage. In this picture, it also is leaking into that lighting fixture. It's hard to see, there's some discoloration there, but that is where water has actually leaked into that lighting fixture as well. The bottom right picture is a picture of a drain outside the building, and it's pretty nasty looking with mold and things there. That's been cleaned up. However, the importance of that picture is really what's on the other side of that wall, which is our Patrol Lieutenant's Office. And we've had leakage out of that pipe into the office, into the walls, the floors. And in that office, we've literally pulled the walls open. As you can see, this is one small piece of the wall that they removed that had mold growing inside of it. We opened that up, tried to dry that out, but if you can imagine, this is occurring in multiple locations in the building. So, we're fearful that there's that issue occurring in numerous locations. We have some aging infrastructure. Our elevator, as you can see, it was wired and inspected in April of 1974. When you get on the elevator, if you look down, we've actually wore hole in the floor. You can see the plywood underneath the tile inside the elevator. That elevator's been there since the building was built, and we have continuous problems with that, and it requires routine repairs each year. Excuse me. Our HVAC units, we have issues every summer with that. About a month and a half ago, we had one of those units go down for a two-month timeframe. It was very uncomfortable in the portion of the building that that HVAC served. We tried to supplement that with fans, try to keep it as efficient as we could for the operations. But when the building's heating up to 85 to 90 degrees, it's not really conducive to efficiency for those folks that are working in that area. This is part of our roof issues. As you can see, this wasn't just a rain. There's clear skies in that picture. This was several days after a rain. This is the pooling that we experience on the roof, and obviously, that water's got to go somewhere as it starts working down into the structure. This is likely where many of our leaks are occurring despite repairs to the roof over the years, the most recent being in 2017, an extensive repair. We continue to see these types of leaks coming into our building. The next is actually a video of our patrol room. If I can get that to play. This was actually taken about a month ago, and I apologize, I don't know that it's playing, but that is water running down the inside of the wall into our patrol room. Those are obviously electrical conduits running down the wall. And what's important about that is this is what's just below those conduits. We have computer systems, telephones, charging stations. Those two conduits actually lead down to our connections for electricity, for internet and our network. So, obviously, not ideal. You don't want water in your patrol room where you have that type of sensitive equipment. Our electrical and IT infrastructure puts us in a position where we have no existing capacity for electrical expansion due to the age of the electrical system. We're also, that also goes hand-in-hand with our IT expansions that are limited by existing infrastructure, which limits our technology within the building. Secured, appropriate, built, and equipped IT rooms are not available. As you can see from that picture on the side, that's one of our IT rooms. It was actually initially built in the building, it looks like, for telephone equipment. Some of that equipment's still in that room, and it's been converted to try to use as a server room. Obviously, those servers put off a lot of heat, and we have to keep that room cool. So, much of the time, that door has to remain open so that we can maintain appropriate environmental conditions in that room so that the equipment doesn't fail. Our building access control system has reached its end-of-life two or threefold, and is a concern for us each day, ensuring that that stays up and running. Our IT department does a fantastic job in trying to maintain that system, but we're getting to a point where more parts to keep that up and running are no longer available. We've also had experienced previous leaks into both our upstairs IT room just off the side of our dispatch center, putting that equipment at risk. This is our Dispatch 911 Center. This photo on the right is a photo from that room. We have several issues going on in our dispatch center, one of those being our radio system degradation in need of trying to replace that radio system. They have outdated radio equipment in that room as well as outdated consoles. All this stuff leads to inefficient system operations within the room. How we're physically utilizing the equipment in the room is inefficient in that we still have to do hands-on any time we want to talk on the radio, any time we want to answer the phone. Simultaneously, they're expected to be entering information into call sheets so that officers or fire EMS can have that information as they're responding scene. So, very inefficient in how we have that set up. The structure of the room is not really supportive of technology. We'll see here in a minute what I'm talking about in that regard. And we also have roof and window leaks into this room. That picture there, they say picture speaks a thousand words. If you really look at that picture, it says a lot. You can see that window is discolored from the leaks that have leaked down through it. It's a double-pane window. That water has ran inside that window and, of course, out of that window into the building. It's difficult to see in this picture, but there's discoloration on the floor because this picture was actually taken after water had leaked into the room. And you can see the discoloration on the floor just in front of the window where the floor is wet. You can also see some of the equipment. That is a radio console sitting there to the right with a boom microphone coming off of it. I was impressed to see we had one of those antiques when I got here, and we're still using it. It works every day, so we're happy to have it because it's what runs our center. You can see, from that picture, there are a lot of things that are not ideal in how we have that room set up, how we run that equipment that's utilized in that room. Our next slide is our Dispatch IT closet. One of our issues in our building is storage. You can see that in these IT closets, there are items related to what that equipment does stored in each one of those rooms. Obviously, not an ideal situation if you need to get in room and work on that equipment. You have to move all of that out to get in, to work on that. In the second photo, you can see that the ceiling tile is left off. That's intentional. That is off so that we can create ventilation for that room to help keep the heat down so we don't have damage to that equipment. And you can also see how all the copper is running, the wiring is running up into the ceiling, which becomes important in that next picture. The dispatch ceiling, you can see as you're standing in that room, there's buckling going on in that ceiling. Part of that is the weight from all of the copper wiring that's in the ceiling. That type of room, all of that should be running through the floor and brought into the center through the floor rather than through the ceiling. We also have, difficult to see, but we also have leaks already developing again on all those tiles that we've replaced recently in that room. Talk a little bit about facility space. Where space is a premium for us. We have insufficient training and meeting space for our agency. Our building layout is not necessarily efficient for our operations. Our gym facility is not really ideally located. We have insufficient storage space, as we've kind of touched on in some of the other photographs. Our locker room is actually located in a common publicly-traveled area of the Police Department. And offices, we have offices that are overcrowded with multiple people in them or storage that is, that we're trying to facilitate within those offices for those individuals. We have insufficient and unsecured parking. I don't know if you've come down in the middle of the day and tried to visit us. If you find a parking space, you're pretty lucky. Normally, on the north side of the building, there's one or two, but if we have anything, any type of activity going on, we're full with two or three visitors within the building as far as parking is concerned. And we have no room in our evidence for expansion. The first picture there on the left is a picture of an office downstairs. That's actually an exterior door, so people actually move in and out of that doorway and through that office as that individual's trying to work. That's actually our Public Information Officer's office. I should have taken a better picture of this. You can see some boxes lying there just at the left of the door. The remainder of his office is primarily storage. He moves through that to his desk, to his workstation, and everything around his desk is utilized as storage for the programs that he participates in and runs and is responsible for. The picture on the right is a photo looking from our primary hallway on the first floor into the patrol locker room. As you can see, there's an exterior door that leads directly into that locker room that all patrol officers, many of our personnel, utilize to come in and out of the building. That area there is actually where officers come to dress for work because those are their lockers along the right-hand side of that wall, and they're also on the left in that room. But obviously, no privacy there as you can move through the building, and it's just off the side of that hallway as well as...
Gee, where did those lockers come from, again?
I'm sorry, I don't know where those lockers came from.
They were donated by Home Depot.
Home Depot donated them, right? Okay, that's what I thought.
I was not aware of that, so interesting to know. Our training space, this is a picture of our training room. We really don't have space where we can put, if, you know, I've wanted to have an all-call meeting for an apartment to put the majority of our people in a room so we can have, you know, those conversations and training. We don't have space to do that in that room comfortably. We can squeeze 18 people into that room, but, well, I'll say uncomfortably, we can squeeze 18 people in that room. It's definitely not ideal for a training environment. We certainly don't have room to conduct some of the training that is necessary for law enforcement that takes a little more space as you're working through scenarios, doing defensive tactics training, and those types of things. On the right is our gym, our physical training space I mentioned earlier. It really is a hallway between the entry, as you come up the stairs, to cross over to evidence, to dispatch. Our break room is in that area. The upstairs bathroom is actually accessed in the gym as well. So, it's more of a very wide-open hallway that's been converted into a gym to be utilized by the officers. It gets a lot of room. Unfortunately, where it's located, it makes it very difficult for evening shift or night officers to work out during day shift hours because it is budded up against offices on most walls, so the sound from that room disrupts work in those offices. It becomes an issue. This is a copy room downstairs. It's been converted to an office on the left. As you can see, that carpet is worn there because that is the printer right off the side of our records department, so that printer gets used quite a bit, so definitely not a very efficient location for the person working in that office, having someone in all day long, printing and pulling things off the printer. The other is our patrol briefing room. It is small. On the right-hand side of that, you can see some more lockers, which is also an area where people arrive to work and get dressed and get their equipment on. It's not a very efficient space for briefings for more than five or six individuals. If we're running an operation, that's not a location where we can put people to actually brief what's going on. So, kind of a summary of our current issues. You know, it's difficult for us to maintain operational standards and best practices for accreditation just from the limitations of the building and some of the issues that we are encountering. We've been able to work around a lot of those things and create workarounds, but it's definitely an ideal situation for us. Engaging with the community is very difficult as there's no controlled access in the building past our front lobby doors. We were talking earlier about our Citizens Academy that's coming up. We have that upstairs in our training room, but from that, you can access anything on the second floor. Evidence, administrative offices, criminal investigation offices. Our dispatch centers there, they are secured by a doorway there, but beyond that, it's not set up ideally to have public in and out for interactions. We've really outgrown the footprint of the building from interior operations to parking as well as just public citizen access into the building. If you've ever come to try to visit, you've experienced that because we have both accreditation and CEGI standards that require us to screen people coming into the building with ID and ensuring that they're escorted through the building. Our building is, the deterioration is really impacting all aspects of our operations. As we've looked through this, you can imagine working in that building and some of the roadblocks that come up daily for folks and issues that they have to resolve on their own just from lack of space. We also, our technology is lagging in part due to the inability of the building to support additional IT infrastructure. That's very important in our business today is being able to keep up with technology and ensure that we're being able to serve our citizens the best we can with the options that are out there. Health concerns are a serious item for me related to the environmental conditions created by the age and the deterioration of the building. We know we've had mold in one wall for sure. I can't imagine with the amount of water we take on with each moisture event that we don't have more of that. Asbestos has also been identified in the building. Some abatement was done where it was going to be disturbed, but other than that, the decision was made to leave that in place inside the building because if it's not disturbed, it's not as great a threat, but definitely a concern for everyone who is working inside that facility. Our training spaces, as we discussed, is not really sufficient for our current needs and not sufficient for the goals of the agency and what we're trying to accomplish through some of our updated policies and programs. And that is the end of my presentation.
We want to go to questions of the chief.
So, I would like for Chief Maloney to also present, and then we can have questions regarding operational issues.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you. Give you a little presentation on the Fire Department, and at the very end, we'll talk a little bit about the opportunities for the Emergency Operations Center. So, currently, Fire Administration is located at 87 Coronado. So, we have EMS moved out there in January of 2004, and fire moved out in January of 2005. We're located in a commercial strip center out there. We currently have seven personnel out there, myself, Deputy Chief, Emergency Management Coordinator, the Fire Marshal, Deputy Fire Marshal, EMS building, which brings in the public too, and then the Administrative Assistant. So, we're also the main delivery for all EMS medications and supplies. We're the quartermaster for all KFP uniforms, medical records, and then our compliance records are kept out there for Texas Commission on Fire Protection, Department of State Health Services, TECO for the Fire Marshal's Office, the DEA, PPE, storage, EMS training equipment, and all KFP files. This office is currently leased in the budget for fiscal year '22 at $4,008 with a 2% increase every fiscal year. And so, that is one of the things we are looking at, the Fire Administration building, about a little over 5,000 square feet, built in 1984. Does have two bays in the back, eight offices, three storage areas, and one conference room. Does have two bays in the back, eight offices, three storage areas, and one conference room. So the location for us is a challenge as Fire Administration is as chief. So we're located on the western edge of Kerrville city limits. So we're about a little over five miles from Station Three and Station Four, and about three miles from Central Fire Station. So a relocation to a central loca-, central area would be convenient to all the stations, allowing the apparatus to remain at least in district or at least one adjacent district. Right now, the challenge is if we bring in apparatus from Station Four or Three, logistically, we have to make changes to make sure we maintain our response times. So we now have two apparatus in, in one district. So it is a little bit of a challenge, and this would also improve our collaboration and communication between operations and administration. Training's a big one. Training's a big one that does impact our recruitment and retention. So as y'all see here, so this is our central fire station, your main room. So we do not have a training room, so we utilize this space here for training. The fire and EMS training, our meetings are hosted at the day room and the kitchen. So we can have up to twenty-five members in the room that are seated in recliners, the kitchen table in the very back there, standing at the kitchen ta-, counters during the presentation or meetings. So we consistently have to reserve city and public venues for fire, EMS, and any other training that we have or continuing education. So we reserve these outside venues for training, but the difficulty typically is the parking for fire and EMS apparatus to make sure we maintain a reasonable turnout time for quick response plus ensure the security of our apparatus. Some of our continuing education classes can be up to sixty paramedics in a room. Once again, we have to host those at public venues, and officer meetings are also held at city or public venues for more privacy. We host TEACO's classes for outside agencies to help offset some of our expenses to use for our fire training facility at Fire Station Number Three. So we currently conduct those at Fire Administration Conference Room, but if there's more than six students, we have to reserve a city or public venue because we can't accommodate more than that. Currently, our paramedic class program, our paramedic training program that we send our firefighters to, has transitioned to a virtual and an in-house training for, from the traditional classroom. So our paramedic class currently, they're doing training or taking their test at City University. And then they're also doing some of the training and skills training at our central fire station bay and our workout room because we don't have a training facility. The, and once again, this impacts our recruitment and retention because this is something where we look when guys start or firefighters start with us. This is how we provide some of our training. And of course, we use our public is very generous with us, and we can get to other places, but there's a lot of logistical challenges to that. Security for Fire Administration, so this is a shot in the back of the building there. So one of the things, we've had an issue before and typically on occasion request extra patrol by Kerrville Police Department. So there are some, on occasion, some homeless in the back of the building there. We do have two female employees, and I require them, if they come in early or late, especially during the winter hours when the days are shorter, they have to park up front back there. So this is in a commercial area, and there is just nobody there all the way through our commercial district. So the public safety complex would improve our building's security and our entry control. So currently, you can see the back bays there. We have to keep those down because they're not monitored in the back. So we do try to keep the doors down as best we can to ensure the security of the building. We also keep our, once again, as I said, our storerooms for uniforms, compliance files. We do store three vehicles here also overnight, and so that's what we look at. And our medical supplies, we, this is our primary delivery at Fire Administration for our inventory that we, they are stored here in that back bay there, in the back bay. So we store some of our, that don't require to be in their HVAC or the heating and air. So we'll store them in there in a pallet or two pallets where they were delivered in. And then the supplies and medications are moved into this back storage room here under the heating and air until we can move them down to Central Fire Station for field distribution. There's another picture here with supplies I didn't show, and that's the one with our quartermaster room where all our uniforms are kept at Fire Administration. Once again, another overcrowding space. We're utilizing spaces there, and we're at maximum. We have shelving in there. On the other side of the shelving, we keep our medical records in a different room with our PPE. So we, we use one hundred percent of the space there. The restrooms at our facility, currently, there's two male and female restrooms for six staff in the public. So that's a hallway, so that is currently marked as employees only, but that is at the end of the hall is what located for the public restrooms. So to the right is the Fire Marshal's Office, so to the left is our conference room. So we, we have conferences or meeting with the city if they come in and talk to the Fire Marshal's Office. We'll go in there. Emergency Management is located in that hall. Deputy Fire Marshal is at the very end, crossing the men's room. And then our kitchen is also in that same hallway too. The kitchen itself, we, we cannot have all six there. We have to move into the conference room if it's available for there. The Fire Marshal's Office, so the Fire Marshal's Office out of Fire Administration houses both the Fire Marshal and the Deputy Fire Marshal. So they, they, you can see once again, so they're utilizing all the space they can. So in our quartermaster room, they're also keeping all their files. They probably have about six filing cabinets back there, kept of all the plan reviews of the different buildings. So they're also kept under lock and key in the building. Once again, they're also utilizing their space in their office there, and that's the Fire Marshal's Office for that. He does coordinate directly with Development Services on plan reviews, inspections, and meetings. Relocation to a central location would improve operational efficiency and collaboration between those departments. Fire Marshal, he's also a licensed peace officer, so he coordinates with law enforcement on arson investigations, fire fatalities, and other investigative duties, located in the same building with Kerrville Police Department, and improve that operational efficiency. So once again, he does work with municipal courts also. So we are out of space for the Fire Marshal for records and retention requirements. So we're utilizing other space as, as we can. The generator, so that's a picture of Kerrville Police Department generator, so of course I have my eye on that one. We do not have a generator at Fire Administration. So when, when we get a power loss in the area due to severe storms, so we have no power at Fire Administration out there. This is a definite challenge, one that we identified during the winter storm, during the whirling blackouts. So the emergency management coordinator and the deputy fire chief had to relocate to Central Fire Station. Mind you, their offices are out here, so they had to take what they could. Myself, most of my, that I needed was there. So I'm in my office with a flashlight, trying to identify what papers I need to get so I can move back to the EOC at the Kerrville Police Department. And that is, of course, a challenge. One of those, even during that, we had a virtual EOC meeting on that Saturday. Had no power at the building. My laptop had no power. I had to conduct a briefing in my vehicle. Because luckily, my new vehicle actually had a one-ten plug in it. So I was able to power up my laptop to be able to do that. Right after that, we did open up the EOC. So once again, a challenge not having a generator. And then last, I'll bring up, so we'll talk a little bit about the joint EOC opportunity. Currently, the EOC that we have is located at City University. We operate here with the city of Kerrville as a unified command between myself and Chief McCall. The City University, it does not have a generator and lacks some of the resources, the location, the capacity that we're looking for for Emergency Operations Center. Has one restroom off that main, all been in there off the main area for long extended operations. That's not going to really be conducive so, for any sort of twelve-hour operations and/or as we were doing sixteen to eighteen hours plus overnight operations. Parking garage also is used by citizens during severe storms. Therefore, we can real quickly lose our ability to get any parking in there as we saw during the Fourth of July event. And then so once again, it's an inability of public safety to actually have them all in one room.
No, I think, I think that covers EOC, just the, the space, the ability for us to, to communicate and have our resources readily available to us is important in those timeframes. I recall the briefing from Chief Maloney's truck. I was very impressed with his resourcefulness to make that happen.
This is a unique opportunity with a joint EOC, definitely having us together, matching the public safety under one house, doing that all-call briefing, if we need to, for those that are on duty. So whether providing water missions or whatever mission we're doing during an emergency for our citizens. So we can provide that briefing under one room as a unified command and make those decisions, operational decisions, to move quickly. And that is my presentation.
I think you've got one more slide on some of the critical aspects.
I think, I think some of our critical aspects to new facility planning, one of the things that, that as I look at this, it becomes important to be is for us to ensure that we're planning for, for growth and future growth, ensuring that we have, have the vision necessary to construct this building in, in a manner that, that it's expandable. We have been in our current facility for twenty-seven years. Likely by the time this project, if it comes to fruition, we'll be in that building for over thirty years. So I think it's important for us to look at twenty, twenty-five years out, the utilization of this building that we're considering. As we move forward, we'll also want to consider parking, public parking, secure employee parking, as well as for us, vehicle storage of, of evidence and those types of things. We're currently utilizing other facilities that are definitely not ideal for that. Building security planned into the facility, that can be important for a number of reasons. Not just for the, the obvious reasons of securing the location, but also to be able to utilize the space for public and allowing the public to come in and have those interactions with, with the public safety offices that are housed out of that building. The, we also want to make sure that we ensure the location and accessibility is, is easy for the citizens. As you heard from Chief Maloney, it's important for he and his staff when it comes to training, bringing people together, ensure that they have the resources they need to respond out to emergencies from those trainings. But I think it's also important for us to be available and easily accessible to the citizens. A- as well as, as we move forward with, with this project, I think it's very important for, for the internal staff, for us, to seek out training and look at the processes related to new facility development and really develop our own knowledge of, of this opportunity and how we're going to move forward and have an understanding so that we can be a resource for you as well as the community as we move through this, these planning stages.
So we'll take a break for questions and comments from council right now. We do have some additional staff presentation in regards to what facility planning we've done and the timeline kind of leading up to now. But this would be an opportune time for questions and comments, particularly related to operational issues with the chiefs.
Okay, council?
I have a question. For your evidence and stuff, what are your retention requirements? How long do you have to hang on to that stuff?
It depends on the type of case that we're talking about. If we're talking about capital case, those are obviously decades and decades, could be forever, depending on, on what it is. We, we do routine destruction, so we go through cases that have been adjudicated that have passed the time for appeal, and we destroy that evidence trying to make room in, in that facility, in our evidence facility. But we're certainly not keeping out just for checking in more than this going.
What about juvenile cases? Do you keep that evidence forever?
No, th- those are all on retention schedules based on, based on appeals and based on legal standards.
Okay, and another question for you. Without getting into specifics, you have two interrogation rooms. Are they sufficient for your needs right now?
Certainly not. They're, they're definitely, they're co-located right next to each other. As we try to utilize those, we run into many problems related to the location, the, what the room itself is made of and the sound that travels from those rooms.
And Chief Maloney, you said that you have to use public accommodations sometimes for your meetings and your trainings. Do you ever have to pay a fee for, for utilizing those public buildings?
We do not. Actually, most are very generous. It's on the local churches, so we utilize. St. Peter's has helped us out with some of our larger meetings there, so as methods.
So that's being donated, that room and that time in that room is being donated to the city?
Correct.
Okay.
And then our storage for some of ours, just to kind of off that, we keep our medical records for seven years or until they're twenty-one, whichever is greater. And then most government is about five years, five to seven years, most of our government.
Thank you.
A question I had, the rent for the, for the fire central, or for Central Officer Fire, you said it's forty-two thousand eight hundred, then you had a number of seven hundred thousand. What is a seven hundred thousand?
Well, I have the number on there since we moved in in fiscal year two thousand and four. So backing with what we paid every year, we paid.
That's the total. Okay, okay, thank you.
So forty-two seven?
Forty-two eight per year. And then seven hundred thousand total since they've been in the building.
Okay. Alright, other questions?
Y'all, y'all both touched on this, but just tell us a little bit more about what is it like for you to try and recruit officers, bringing them into your facilities? What does that really, what does that really look like and how does that really impact our citizens in the ability to recruit and retain staff?
I can tell you, from our standpoint, it makes it very difficult. It's, it's a large hurdle to leap. Usually, when we're recruiting officers, they're also being recruited by any number of surrounding agencies, agencies in San Antonio area. And when they come into our facility, it speaks volumes about, about the organization and about, you know, the abilities that we have to help them through their career. I think the chief touched on it, with the training space alone. You know, we're very committed in trying to get our officers to each training level that they need to attain their certifications through their career. But it makes it very difficult for us just for that basic level of training because that's something that we should be able to bring in yearly or bi-yearly to offer to our officers, but we don't have the space to accommodate that. So as a new officer comes in the door and sees that, that's something that they're taking into account. The physical, you know, appearance of the building with, with the water leaks, the, the ceiling tiles that many times are falling in from the moisture. All of those things weigh into individuals' decision on where they want to go to work. If they, if they go to a community that, that is, you know, blessed with a, with a newer facility and nicer technology, those are all things that, that a young officer is looking for to be able to access in their career.
That's just right around, I mean, thirty miles from now, from here, forty-five miles from here. I mean, it's not, it's not a leap to find a facility that would accommodate those officers.
And to expand on that, how short are you on employees right now for your departments?
We will be nine officers down with a retirement that will be occurring in the next week or so.
We will be six as of this week. I have an employee leaving.
Okay, and does that account for the, the overspending in the budget for overtime last year? The fact that you were having to work your officers more because you didn't have suitable staff?
We have minimum manning with the Fire Department, so we're required to maintain that capacity to respond regardless of staffing. So our personnel are held in and have to work those hours that are available vacated by those individuals that either leave the organization until we can hire someone in. Hiring someone's a, a long process and even longer if we send a paramedic for that.
And something else that, that impacts us, being on just our officer vacancies is our dispatcher vacancies. We currently have two dispatcher vacancies, which impacts our schedule because we're, we're at minimum staffing even in our whole, in our dispatch center. So that, that definitely impacts our overtime in that room and how we have to maintain appropriate manning in that, in that room.
And picking up off of that, can you tell us also what the total or maximum capacity of your departments are? You said you're down so many. What's the maximum capacity that you would want to have ideally?
That's, that's an open-ended question there. You know, that, we've done some, we've done some initial research into our, our capacity for the officers that we have on the street. And we have changed how we're dispatching to calls. And I think over the years, we've adapted to having fewer officers than would normally be necessary for a city this size. If we were full currently, I would likely be coming to the city manager, to the council, asking for additional personnel so that we can start responding more appropriately and more safely to some of our emergency calls. I'm very much an advocate of officer safety and ensuring that we have appropriate resources responding to calls. Uh, I, I'm very much, uh, an advocate of officer safety and ensuring that we have appropriate resources responding to calls. And it's very much a, uh, culture within our agency to sometimes respond to calls that really two officers should be responding to with only one, uh, primarily because there aren't, uh, the officers available to, to respond to that call.
And we have looked at some of the operational and space needs, uh, associated over the next twenty-year time span. And although Curbville twenty fifty outlined relatively slow population growth of, you know, between one and two percent, because we're a regional hub, we continue to have business growth, which is good, but that also enhances the level of responses that we still have to make from a public safety standpoint. And so that business growth has been, uh, higher than what our population growth has been. So both of those indicate that not only are we out of space right now with the existing personnel, but we certainly will be very, very soon and, and for the outlook forecast.
And I'm, I'm concerned with the, with the IT, that's super concerning to me. Um, Charvy, are you Charvy? Oh. Oh, with the municipal, sorry. I couldn't tell for sure. Uh, I mean, uh, we've talked a little bit about this, but, but it's, i- it's more than just, it's about public safety as we all know, but, but, you know, it, it concerns me greatly that, that, what we have to deal with, with IT and if there's failures with IT and, um, I, I find it to be a bit frightening.
Yeah, I, I, I'm concerned with, uh, with our nine-one-one center, our dispatch center and, uh, and where we're at, uh, as related to the, the facility and building around that. Uh, that is my biggest concern in regards to technology and, uh, where we really need to, uh, to focus.
And we just don't have the ability to upgrade.
Yeah, and, and we'd be putting that equipment right now, if we, if we put new equipment in that room, we'd be putting it at, uh, at risk, uh, because of the, the infrastructure around it.
You know what, I've, the council's, I think, has heard me quote this before, but James Avery told me one time, if you want your workers to do good work, you have to provide a good workspace. And I, I really believe that is true. And let me say one other thing, last year when I was working part-time for Peterson Health, I, they asked me to interview the department heads at the ACC Emergency Care Unit and, uh, on, on the order of space. And what I discovered in that process, that, that building has been in service for twenty-one years. Population's grown, hospital's reaching nine counties, uh, and they were just out of space. But the fact that you had equipment in, stored out in the hall and this and that, and not good workflow, I think affected the productivity and the psychology. Now, what they've decided is they're gonna take one-fourth of that out and create another unit, a surgery unit. But I just think it begins to, it affects your workforce.
And chief?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I was concerned about the mole, uh, the IT bothers me also. But have you found that the mole does affect some of the officers, uh, with allergies, all that kind of thing?
I, I, I couldn't speak directly to that. Couldn't make inferences that, uh, yeah, that, that does affect people in the building. I get the sneezes, uh.
Well, that can be a, a big health factor and, and that's something that bothers me, so.
Yeah.
Agree.
Okay, any other questions or we go to the next part of the presentation?
I had just one last question for Chief Maloney. Towards the end of your presentation, I, I'm trying not to misquote you, but I think you might've said something around the lines that it was probably insufficient or due to safety concerns for both departments to be in the same location. What were you, can clarify what you were referring to there?
In regards to the joint DOC?
I think that's probably what you were discussing, it was towards the end.
Yeah, one of the things for the joint DOC, I think, the, oh, the opportunity to, uh, to improve our capacity to respond as a unified, uh, command is what was pretty much, I think, what I was talking about there. So currently my office is the Western Ends Chief Office is at, at the Police Department. So for us to work together, so one, I had to, I broke off into one of the interrogation rooms as an office. So it's not a fish, so I think we can improve our, our safety for our citizens by building a joint DOC where we can work out of two offices, come together for that, then still have, uh, everything back in the office, we need to be able to do that. It was a challenge and it would have been probably a couple bigger challenge, but chief did have his office there, uh, where he had all his headquarters, probably, I believe.
I think that's right, I think that's right.
Well, we can improve that, yes, sir.
Right, okay, and y'all are, you said you're doing this at the City University location?
It's currently with the primary location for the DOC.
For, for just public sake, can you clarify what City University is, whether that's y'all or, or you?
City Uni- oh, I'm sorry.
Point of order, mayor, um, there was a piece of paper handed to Councilmember Garcia and he said he had one more question, he's been asking several questions since that time, so.
Did you receive another question from?
From a public.
I'm sorry?
The question is that I didn't understand the term, maybe y'all knew it, I don't think. I've been here for eleven years, I do not know what City University is.
But I think it's inappropriate for citizens to hand us, am I right, Mike?
Councilmember in note.
That's, that's up to you.
Not against our procedure rules, I was just asking a question, I don't think it's wrong to ask a question that.
I personally think it's inappropriate for that without us all getting that same information.
Well, you, you have it now, and that's the question.
I think it's inappropriate.
Okay, uh, can we move to the next, uh, presentations?
Sure, do I not get an answer to my question?
The mayor has, I believe, asked for it to be moved.
Let's move ahead and, uh, we may come back to that.
Well, and just clarification, so on the point of order, is the mayor ruling that she's correct in her point of order?
Uh, yes.
So I wanted to just briefly talk through, this obviously is a very critical issue, uh, as has been illustrated, uh, from our personnel, uh, tonight, but it's not a new issue. Uh, in fact, it's an issue that's been identified back to two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen timeframe. Uh, in fact, it, it first made, uh, it on to one of the capital budgets, uh, that was approved, uh, within the two thousand, uh, sixteen, uh, uh, fiscal year budget. Uh, as part of that, as, as you may recall, we went through the Curbville twenty fifty process and I'll talk a little bit about that more in a minute. But one of those identified elements was a space needs assessment. And so with the chiefs that we had in place at the time, the personnel that we had at, at the time, we went through, uh, an effort to really identify going forward over the next twenty years, what, what do we need, right? Uh, we don't want to go a- and build a facility that we're immediately outgrown. Uh, and so we need to plan for the future. Yes, we have, uh, gradual, modest incremental growth within the community, but we still need to plan for that growth, both within our city organization as well as the community overall, uh, and the needs that evolve over that next twenty years of time span, uh, within the public safety realm because tho- those needs do evolve over time. Uh, and so that report was finalized in fall of twenty nineteen. Uh, it identified, you know, roughly, uh, three, five acres minimum and about forty-eight thousand plus square feet, uh, of, uh, building needs. Uh, and again, uh, just began to explore real estate at that time, uh, and that was in the twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty timeframe. And we had a global pandemic and we had a recession that ensued after that. As you very well know, we'll talk about it more later in your budget presentation, very austere city budgets. Uh, and in fact, with mid-year budget cuts that happened during that fiscal year nineteen timeframe, uh, that were very painful. Uh, and timing was not right, although we continue to explore real estate, the timing wasn't right to really be, uh, talking about a multimillion dollar, uh, reinvestment. Certainly, we continued those efforts where we could, uh, but as we were cutting back budgets, uh, council at times said, we need, we need to step back a little bit from this and kind of, kind of reassess. Uh, we did also have a pre- uh, previous, uh, certificate obligation debt issuance in early twenty nineteen for streets and drainage. That did utilize all of the available debt capacity at that time. And we knew that there would not be debt capacity that would be coming up for several years after that. So again, we talked a little bit about Curbville twenty fifty earlier. Um, one of the key, uh, elements within public facility and services planning was prioritizing public safety. Uh, and in fact, one of the highest priorities. Uh, and it was highlighted that the community, uh, must continue, uh, to devote adequate resources to be prepared to make strategic investments necessary to maintain the level of service well into the future. Uh, and in fact, uh, we must evaluate the performance of the existing assets, determine what new facilities may be required, uh, and then look at potential locations, uh, and, and resources needed for those facilities. And so we launched off on that needs assessment, uh, and, and that, uh, again, did identify those, those elements. Uh, but here we are after a global pandemic and a recession, uh, needing to take those next steps. And so again, Curbville twenty fifty, uh, F-two, the guiding principle, placing at the highest priority on public safety, police, fire, and EMS, and considering bond funding for new public safety building, uh, or complex. And so with that, I'll bring up, um, Ms. Julie Behrens, uh, to further brief the council.
Good afternoon. Okay, so I'll give you a little bit of capital funding overview here. Um, so as you know, many cities have infrastructure needs that exceed annual capital budgets. So I think that's probably true that most of us don't live in a pay-as-you-go, uh, funding environment, uh, for large expenses like this. Debt can be an effective tool, um, if we utilize it wisely and if we manage it wisely. And I believe that city staff were very conservative, council's very conservative in guiding us in the way that we handle debt. Um, it also allows us to structure financial burden over the useful life of a facility or a project, depending on what that is, whether it be streets or, or buildings or facilities of any kind. Um, in this situation, this facility would be expected to far outlive the, the length of the debt. Um, one thing we haven't talked about before, but it promotes some equity among generations of taxpayers, so. So by spreading out this debt over multiple years, you're allowing multiple generations who would be utilizing this facility to help pay for it, um, essentially with their property taxes. Uh, it helps keep us, um, in a stable property tax rate environment and helps us maintain cash liquidity. So I think we've all seen, um, what an emergency situation can do to us from a cash flow situation. Fortunately, we're very healthy and we're able to front money for expenses needed during, uh, the pandemic that we needed, uh, whether it be personnel or PPE or a multitude of things that we spent above our normal budgetary requirements and then also the winter storm. So while we have been reimbursed for some of our COVID expenses, you know, we did have to assume the responsibility for the rest. And at this time, we're still waiting for any kind of reimbursement for winter storm. So we do need to keep our cash as liquid as possible to be able to, you know, maintain, uh, normal operations and emergency operations. Uh, we do have very conserv- conservative and strict policies relating to that, which we live within very carefully. Um, and staff do give careful consideration before we bring any kind of debt issuance to council or, um, even for a conversation. So we've been very responsible with paying down our debt. So as with all of our financial obligations, uh, we're very on top of it, usually ahead of what our obligation is. And we do take advantage of refunding whenever, whenever we can because we, you know, could, this could come up in a couple of years where we could have an opportunity for refunding to save even more money. And that's happened to us twice within the last four years. Moving on to just a little bit about our Standards and Poor's credit report. I don't know if you guys read the full report, but it was released as part of a press release this past week, um, that Stuart released. Um, but just to give you a quick overview and, and just so you know, um, so S and P Committee is made up of members from a multitude of states, so not just Texas. So they're really trying to establish a national standard and national credit rating so that they're comparing all cities equally, um, across, across the United States. And then also, so they're giving the same kind of report outs for all cities. Um, so just want to read you a quick quote that I thought was, was really complimentary, um, I guess for my department and, and citywide, really. Um, but the two thousand twenty-one credit rating opinion from Standards and Poor, the rating reflects our view of the city's consistently strong budgetary performance and very strong available resources, both of which are aided, in our opinion, by the city's strong financial policies and practices. And I think that speaks really for all of us in the way we manage our jobs day-to-day and how serious we take the finances of a city. And I didn't put all of the comments in here, but I did want to touch on just a few comments, um, that they came back and actually spoke to us about, uh, prior to the rating coming out, but these are included in our credit report. So very strong management, uh, with strong financial policies and practices under the Financial Management Assessment methodology, which is what they use to rate us. Strong budgetary performance and they made, um, especially, um, noted that we actually ended a surplus in FY twenty twenty, even though we were expecting about a two million dollar shortfall. And I would attribute that to all of our staff and departments who said, hey, we can cut here, we can cut here. You know, we don't know what's coming, let's protect the city's, uh, finances, we don't want to get into fund balance, and we didn't have to do that. So, um, they were really complimentary of that. Uh, very strong budgetary flexibility, so, uh, with an available fund balance in twenty twenty of thirty-five percent of our operating expenses, that's very healthy. Very strong liquidity and we've talked about that a little bit. Um, strong institutional framework score, um, adequate per capita economy. Um, and they did tell us they would consider an upgrade either to a double A plus or even a triple A as our economy continues to grow, especially on the retail side, because we're continuing to see retail manufacturing, those kind of things grow. So there's a possibility that we could see an increase in our credit score. So real quick picture of General Debt Service Fund. Um, you'll remember that we recently completed the refunding of the two thousand twelve debt. This is EIC-supported debt, not property tax-supported debt, but just to give you an idea, it was finalized in October of twenty twenty for an overall savings of eight hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Now, that savings was split between a couple of funds, uh, but just to give you an idea of what can happen, uh, when rates fluctuate. So the, for the proposed issuance in front of us, and we've talked about this a lot, but it's an issuance of between six point five and seven million dollars in certificates of obligation. And we've talked about that and that, that range will, it will fluctuate depending on what rate we actually get when we go out to negotiate. Are we allowed to do that? Um, this will be used for the acquisition and, uh, design of a new public safety complex, which both chiefs have talked to you about. Uh, we are in a very low interest rate environment, um, you know, we know interest rates are volatile, that could change. Um, but so far, it's looking really good. Um, the last issuance we talked about was for streets and drainage, that was done in two thousand nineteen, which used up the capacity at the time, and this is the first time that we've had the capacity to issue more debt. Um, the debt portion of the property tax, we're being unchanged if we're able to issue this debt. Uh, that's kind of been council's direction and, and policy for quite a while and we've never, uh, recommended that we make any change to that. Um, General Debt Service Obligation paid with property taxes, twelve point eight million. Um, and again, just to reinforce, you know, we haven't brought this to council in previous, in prior years for a debt issuance because we just haven't had the capacity. So I know that question has come up a few times. Okay, so talking about our overall debt service, um, just want to cur- tell a few misconceptions about information that's going around about our debt service. So we do in fact have sixty-seven million dollars in debt, that is a true statement. Um, however, I did a breakout here so that you can see where that debt is paid for and how it is obligated. So forty-three point six million dollars of that is paid for with water and sewer revenue. And I wasn't here at the time, but I know that there was a complete, um, system upgrade to water meters and, um, very, very expensive upgrade, that was multiple million dollars that took up a lot of that debt. Um, so all infrastructure things that were neglected and had to be done all at once. And so again, you know, just addressing these things as we need to address them. Um, ten point six million dollars is EIC-related debt. Again, that is paid with a portion of, uh, sales tax that belongs to the EIC, not general fund sales tax. And then our general fund service, uh, debt service obligation of twelve point eight million dollars is in fact paid for with property tax. And you can see the graph over here that gives you a breakout of those percentages. So other funds sometimes do use property tax as collateral. So it can be misconstrued in a way that it is property tax-related debt, but it is not. So we use it as collateral or security to issue debt for other funds. It gives us a lower interest rate, um, and there's a lot less fees and a lot fewer requirements if we're able to secure it with known revenue. Uh, so that does reduce a lot of costs when we're issuing debt for other funds. Um, so debt for other funds such as water and EIC has never been paid for with property tax dollars at all. So you can see that only nineteen percent of the city's overall debt here is paid for with property taxes. A little bit more about our debt service fund. This is actually a chart that was prepared, um, by Hilltop Securities, who's our financial advisor, so Ann's team, um, who y'all have met. Uh, she compiles this for us and really compares us to cities with like, of like size and like credit ratings and just taking a look at their overall property tax-supported debt. And then she does some overall debt, a lot of analysis on what other cities are doing. So this does incorporate, um, all kinds of debt obligations. So whether it's a go-bond or, uh, certificates of obligation, a tax note, all of those things, it incorporates all of that kind of debt. But you can see where Curbville sits, um, you know, is, is a pretty good picture, um, in my mind. This is the same kind of chart, but this is looking at, uh, per capita debt, again with property tax-supported debt. So comparing cities of like size and like credit ratings. And you can see that Curbville is just under five hundred dollars per capita in property tax-supported debt, uh, which is again on the lower end of the data that was, uh, supplied to us by Hilltop Securities. And this information is taken from annual financial reports from all of these cities. So they actually go out and look at financial reports, they're not polling cities or anything like that. They're getting it directly from their financial reports, which is why the date is from last year because just like with us, they're looking at our year-end financial reports, to get a true picture of that. to get a true picture of that. So discussing this proposed issuance of certificates of obligation, um again, this issuance is between six and a half to seven million dollars depending on the rate. The primary use will be uh for acquisition of land for a multi-departmental public safety complex, uh police department, municipal court, fire administration, emergency operations center, all included in that. Could also pay for potential design and engineering elements, um depending on, of course, land acquisition and those kind of things, what we're able to find. Um so with this issu- issuance, the city would remain below our maximum debt uh per our policy. Uh no proposed change to the INS or the tax portion of the prop- the property tax rate and actually proposing a reduction of the M and R rate. So once again, four out of five years, we've reduced the maintenance and operations rate or the overall property tax rate. Um so I'll speak personally for a second about the EOC. Um so just so that you know, our EOC is made up of a group of our leadership team from multiple departments. And there's a few people from each department that actually sit on our EOC team. And we actually go through training, go through role play, go through situational response, those kind of things. But this was the first time, to my knowledge, uh at least in a very long time, that we've actually had to put those practices into play. And it was difficult. Um we were here, we were there. Uh we were, where can we get power? Where do we have enough space? Where do we have enough phones? Where do we have enough computers? And we were all over the city. So I can say from personal experience, we had um PD coming to help us where we were located. Uh we were going to help at the PD if they needed help with the call center. So we were scattered all over the city. So I think that we proved in two major events this year how important it would be to have a joint EOC to where we actually can effectively stand that up when we need to. Um so just to remind you, for the last five years, we have reduced the property tax rate. Um so this would be the fourth um out of those five years and the twelfth consecutive year that the property tax has remained the same or actually reduced. And we do use a very conservative approach when we do budgeting and financial management. One of the last things here, I wanted to just give you a brief overview um to clarify some facts about uh regarding Certificates of Obligation Act and House Bill eighteen sixty nine. Um I've compiled a little bit of information for you here. So the Certificates of Obligation Act authorizes the issuance of certificates for following, not only in an emergency capacity, construction of any public work, purchase of materials, supplies, equipment, machinery, buildings, land and rights of way for authorized needs and purposes, and payment of contractual obligation for professional services, including tax appraisers, engineers, architects, attorneys, mapmakers, um should anyone, auditors, financial advisors and fiscal agents. So several uses there that we can or have the authority to issue certificates of obligation um that council can approve. And then as far as House Bill eighteen sixty nine, basically what that's saying is it is allowable for cities to use debt service taxes or INS taxes to pay service uh debt service on certificates of obligation if they are issued to, among other qualifying purposes, public safety facilities. So we're well within the law um to issue these uh certificates for this purpose. And then lastly, uh a little bit of information on municipal bond amortization. So an amortization for a municipal bond is not the same as an amortization for a car loan or a home loan. So we're actually selling debt. We're not going to a bank who's gonna issue us a straight line loan. So there's a lot of factors to consider. Um so standard amortization schedules don't account for um things related to the sale of municipal debt, such as coupons, discounts and premiums. And most of the time when Anne comes and gives her presentation, she doesn't get that deep into public funds investment, but there are a lot of things to consider when you're selling debt. Doesn't consider terms, repayment schedules or any kind of early call provisions or any special provisions that may be built into that uh that sale. Um our preliminary official statement does project point eight oh interest rate, but looking at the market and the other issuing issuances that have been uh sold in the last couple of weeks, uh we are, we think that's conservative. And so we really are expecting to get a better rate than that. However, we won't know exactly, you know, what that rate looks like until we go out to negotiate this, so. So before I turn that over to EA for final comments, anybody have any questions for me?
Any question?
Thank you. That was a really good summary of EA. Thank you.
Thank you. In conclusion, Mayor and Council, uh as you've heard from our personnel, we do have uh building deficiencies in multiple operations. These are causing continued annual operational and emergency facility repairs. Uh it's hampering our public safety recruitment and retention. Our space needs have been assessed. Initial real estate elements have been assessed and evaluated. Our next step, uh we feel like is real estate acquisition and building design. Um we do have, the city has existing debt capacity to begin to solve this facility issue without raising the property tax rate. We are in an environment with historically low interest rates and rising real estate and construction costs, which certainly any delays will cost uh more uh for the taxpayer in the long run. If you happen to answer any questions you may have, and certainly our staff will as well.
Wanna thank everyone here. Wanna thank you all for doing the job that you do in the environment that you are given to work in and how blessed we are. And I will do everything that I can to support you in um the future growth of our community so that you have what you need to be successful.
All right. Any other questions?
No, again, just thank you. I think this is a really good discussion. Uh in the future, you know, having these types of presentations are very beneficial for all involved, as we can clearly see. Uh and it'd be also nice and again beneficial for this type of presentation to be given at regular meetings as well. Um but I do want to again, thank you Chief McCall, Chief Maloney, Julie for the information you provided uh and uh your presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned at five seventeen.
Mayor, we do have a executive session item.
Right, that's right. Uh yeah, is there a motion in regard to that executive session?
I'll make a motion that we move into executive session under five five one point oh seven one. Do we need oh eight seven, Mike? Just just that one second.
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay, thanks. And we'll go upstairs. In uh in session of our workshop and uh is there a motion for us to consider?
There is a motion, Mayor. I would like to make the motion for the city to authorize its attorney to file a motion to overturn the executive director's response to public comment regarding West Texas aggregate.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor, if you let it be known by the raised hands. Okay, and it is unanimous.